And we had another homicide last night at 1:30 in the morning. So now it's up to like 23. Okay, good afternoon, everybody. I am Councilwoman Jan Perry, Chair of Energy and Environment. I'm joined by Councilman Reyes, who's Chair of the Ad Hoc River Committee and Chair of the Ad Hoc Renew LA Committee, Councilman Greg Smith. And we want to welcome you to this joint committee meeting of Energy, Environment, Ad Hoc River and Ad Hoc Renew Wednesday, March 5th, a little bit after 3:00 PM. We have a very important agenda. We want to make sure that we have enough time for presentations. So with that, Mr...okay, we're also joined by...I'm sorry, I didn't see you. Councilwoman Gruel, did I miss anybody else? I'm sorry. Mr. Garcetti is here. Thank you. Yes.
Would I be able to introduce some people who are visiting with us today?
Sure, why don't you do that now?
Okay, thank you. We have colleagues with the Tel Aviv-Los Angeles Partnership of the Jewish Federation, Environmental Exchange to Los Angeles, which is hosted by the Jewish Federation and Kojil and the Friends of Israel's Environment and the Plum Foundation in the City of Los Angeles. And so we have representatives here. If we could ask them to all stand that are here from all over Israel, both mostly here on environmental issues, planners, environmental activists, a wonderful group that are here for a couple of days, I believe, and a week, an entire week. So they're very excited that they actually came here today to be able to have this combination of our three committees to be able to talk about what we're doing on the environment and the exchange that is occurring. And I know they're planning a trip of people to go back to Israel from Los Angeles to also talk about what we're doing here. So I just want to...and Evan Kaiser, who is one who brought everybody here today. Many of you know Evan, who happens also to be a constituent of mine. So let's welcome them here to Los Angeles. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Reyes.
On that point, very interesting, ladies and gentlemen, is the City of LA is looking at building a trash-to-energy plant. And one of the bidders that we're looking is Aerobio in Tel Aviv. So we'll be looking...we'll be going to Tel Aviv in, what, a few weeks now? A month, whatever? To take a look at your technology as it may apply to Los Angeles to deal with our trash problems too. So maybe we'll see somebody over there.
If I can add my...I just came back on Sunday from Tel Aviv and Jerusalem. So I had a wonderful trip and was at the old port just a couple of days ago, a couple nights ago, and saw some of the urban revitalization in Tel Aviv and met with the Governor of the Bank of Israel and some of the political leadership and military leadership, but had a wonderful opportunity to see. And came back, as I believe our former Council President, Alex Padilla, did, having used dual-flush toilets for the whole trip. And it's time for us, as we're talking about our green building ordinance, which is coming forward to full council, we just passed it out of committee a couple of days ago, but for water conservation, it may be time for us to take Israel's lead and do that here too. So stay tuned and welcome. Shalom.
Mr. Reyes. Yes, I just wanted to join the choir. I too was in Israel last year. And the microclimates over there are amazing. You can get to the mountains and to the beach. You can literally drive it. And Masara, Jerusalem, just an amazing, amazing country. But the advancements that you are sharing with the world, international community, I truly appreciate because we do understand that necessity has an ability, has a way of motivating creativity. And you've actually done it. So I hope you enjoy your stay here in Los Angeles and look forward to learning from you. Thank you very much.
Mr. Labange.
And as President of the Sister Cities of Los Angeles and Elat being one of our oldest sister cities, I certainly want to welcome our friends from Israel. And no, what is so great about the world is what we learn from each other. And I hope your stay here is fruitful. And I know you're having a reception, I think, in the tower tonight. And it will be a beautiful sunset for you in Los Angeles. Thank you. Thank you, manager.
Thank you, Mr. Labange, very much. All right. Mr. Garcetti, did you have any presentation you wanted to make?
No, no, that was a joke.
Oh, sorry. Okay, thank you. I took you very seriously. You're the president. Okay. Mr. CLA, if we could go through the agenda, I think we have three agenda items. And the last two, or Madam CLA, or either one of you.
Item number one is the CIO and Bureau of Sanitation Reports in response to motion relative to non-recycle plastics and polystyrene.
Madam Chair, if you like, you can consider item one and two together. They both deal with plastics and polystyrene.
Okay, if there's no objection to that? Okay, great. We'll do that then.
And item number two is the Bureau of Sanitation Report in response to motion relative to the feasibility of recycling and/or banning the use of plastic bags and expanded polystyrene items in the city.
And item number three, if you should just read that into the record.
Okay. Item number three is a motion relative to the feasibility of establishing a plastic bag reduction program.
Believe that's going to be a report back in response to Mr. Reyes's motion? If you want to, we...I don't have any cards on that. Do we have any cards on three? One card on three? We could take...I think we can move three pretty quickly. From Raul Macias and Miguel Luna, if you want to come up and comment on number three right now, and we can take care of that right away. Is Raul Macias and Michael, or Miguel Luna, come on up to the middle? Is this for three? Okay, number one. Okay, great.
He's a marathon runner, so he's still recovering.
He's a little sore then. Okay.
Good afternoon, everyone. We're just here in support of the Council members' resolution or movement towards the banning or reduction of plastic bags. This is something that we're very passionate about at Anawak and Urban Semias, and that we've been working together with Councilmember Reyes's office to make sure that our communities on the ground are engaged in this process. We'd like to congratulate all the motions here today as it shows leadership of the city, leadership from the top down by example. This gives us good leverage as we work at the grassroots level, on the ground with our communities, to let them know that we can meet the city halfway because the city's pulling their weight and doing what needs to be done. One of the things, just quickly, that we've been doing is working with Highland Park community specifically, and we'll be branching out into other communities. And we've engaged communities at the grassroots level. This is a certificate that was given to over 10 stores that participated in the ban the day without a plastic bag that was initiated by Heal the Bay and which many organizations participated in. This is a way to continue to engage the businesses to the point that we have panaderias that on Fridays, they're giving a dollar incentive to customers who bring back a reusable bag. So it's those small things that continue to engage our communities and we're very thankful for, and we are very appreciative of the city's motions to reduce plastics, as we all know, it gets into our waterways.
And one of the most important is to try to involve the youth, the education, the juvenile education, and the families is very, very important. That's why Anawak is involved in this, to try to put the basis for the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Madam Chair, I want to thank you, both Raul and Miguel, my colleagues and those in the audience. I want to amplify the significance of their presence here. Literally, there's hundreds and hundreds of young people who are joining the soccer league in an area where there's very few recreational opportunities. With these hundreds of young people are many, many adults, parents, aunts, uncles, and they're actually taking the initiative of engaging the local commercial corridors and asking the small and medium-sized businesses, the ones that are under 10,000 square feet, to actually engage in this process of looking at alternatives other than plastic bags. So that in of itself creates this grassroots movement, and it's coming from the community. So thank you for your initiative and your support, and we'll continue to work together.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Barbara Monahan Burke, followed by Steve Acetti.
Good afternoon, Councilmembers. I just wanted to mention that years ago, Studio City was in a pilot program for recycling. And we set a really great example, and we're really pleased to be on the forefront of that. And so we do look forward, I'm with the Studio City Neighborhood Council, its Vice President, and we've been working with Zero Waste Program that you have initiated, and we really look forward to this as a great beginning step that everybody can do throughout the city. So I applaud you for it and look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Steve Acetti.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Council. I'm the Director of the California Coastal Coalition, of which the city's a member, and we appreciate your support. We have 35 coastal cities, five counties, Skag, Ambag, Sandag. And we've been working, our organization, the last two years, has been working really hard on the issue of marine debris. We've attended the Ad Hoc River Committee meetings. We were a member of the Plastics Task Force a couple of years ago. And without hearing what's to take place here today, what I would like to report on is that I just came back from Washington, DC. Our organization filed an appropriations request with Senator Feinstein and Representative CAFS for a million and a half dollars to go to the state's "Thank You Ocean" campaign. We're trying to create a statewide public awareness campaign so that while the cities and the counties are doing what they have to do to deal with litter and marine debris, we start educating the public about the impacts of not taking care of trash properly that ends up in the ocean and on the beaches. And the state has promised to match that amount if we're able to get that appropriation from Congress. The other thing we're working on is we have a legislator in Sacramento who's going to pull together all the stakeholders at the state level, the head of DOC, the head of the State Coastal Conservancy, the head of the Ocean Protection Council, IWMB, you know, everybody who's got a stake in this problem are going to meet in a legislator's office and figure out where Prop 84 money is, where bottle bill money is, and create a statewide policy and a statewide funding program so that cities and counties can get grants to do the kinds of things that you're talking about today. It's unbelievable that there's not a statewide comprehensive program for cities to be able to go get money and do these things, but we're working to fix that.
Thank you very much. With that, there are no further cards on number three. Any comments from colleagues?
I do have a few remarks. First, I want to thank Councilman Smith for working on this motion with us and making sure we put this together. In terms of the notion of measurable goals, I do know we have, perhaps we can have staff come to the table for answers on some questions or concerns I have.
Tell me how fast you want to turn the feasibility study over so we can get it back.
Okay. One of the objectives we have is to measure how effective we are as a city. And looking at our ability to measure, I think, is important. I do know the county set this 30% by 2011. But are we in a position as a city to actually assess what our plastic bag recycling levels are like? What is the performance of our blue bins? Do you have the ability to understand that? And if we can measure it, what is realistic for us? I would love to say 40, 50, 60%, but realities tell us differently. Let's understand those realities. But do we have that perspective, given the performance and management practices that you have in place when we look at the realities of what the Blue Bin program is actually doing?
Councilmember Reyes, Enrique Zaldivar, Director of the Bureau of Sanitation, and I want to thank you and every one of the Councilmembers on tackling this subject that touches just about everything and everybody, certainly water and land. With respect to what our efforts have yielded so far, we made plastic bags recyclable back in 2006, July 1st of 2006. And we always give ourselves a year's time of ramping up and education. But I can tell you, though, that our efforts have been fruitful. We have, in total, pounds of how much bags, how many bags we recycle. It's close to a million pounds, pounds, not tons, pounds of plastic bags. As light as they are, folks are, in fact, responding to our efforts, which is encouraging. It's more than encouraging. Our intent back then was that while the debate went on about what to ultimately do with plastic bags, it was important that we made them recyclable. So we did that, working with all of you. So quantifiably speaking, Councilmember, we do have good numbers in terms of how the average resident is responding to that, on both single-family and multifamily.
Great. So can we start establishing thresholds or measurements that can actually give us a sense of progress and allow us to look at what more we need to do to change the way our infrastructure works so that we can push this to the next level?
I think we have a couple of other measurement points. Certainly, what we are capturing in the way of recycling is one. But there's also the one about what is still going to the ocean. And you know, that's on the water side of our business, if you will. And that's when we deal with the propo and the TMDLs, the Trash TMDL, and the...
Good afternoon, everyone. We're just here in support of the council members' resolution or movement towards the banning or reduction of plastic bags. This is something that we're very passionate about at Anawak and Urban Semillas and that we've been working together with Councilmember Reyes's office to make sure that our communities on the ground are engaged in this process. We'd like to congratulate all the motions here today as it shows leadership of the city, leadership from the top down by example. This gives us good leverage as we work at the grassroots level on the ground with our communities to let them know that we can meet the city halfway because the city's pulling their weight and doing what needs to be done. One of the things, just quickly, that we've been doing is working with Highland Park community specifically, and we'll be branching out into other communities. We've engaged communities at the grassroots level. This is a certificate that was given to over 10 stores that participated in the ban the day without a plastic bag that was initiated by Heal the Bay and which many organizations participated in. This is a way to continue to engage the businesses to the point that we have panaderias that on Fridays they're giving a dollar incentive to customers who bring back a reusable bag. So it's those small things that continue to engage our communities and we're very thankful for and we are very appreciative of the city's motions to reduce plastics, as we all know it gets into our waterways.
And one of the most important is to try to involve the youth, the education, the juvenile education and the families is very, very important. That's why Anawak is involved in this, to try to put the basis for the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
If I may, Madam Chair, I want to thank you, both Raul and Miguel, my colleagues and those in the audience. I want to amplify the significance of their presence here. Clearly, there's hundreds and hundreds of young people who are joining the soccer league in an area where there's very few recreational opportunities. What these hundreds of young people are, many, many adults, parents, aunts, uncles, and they're actually taking the initiative of engaging the local commercial corridors and asking the small and medium-sized businesses, the ones that are under 10,000 square feet, to actually engage in this process of looking at alternatives other than plastic bags. So that in and of itself creates this grassroots movement, and it's coming from the community. So thank you for your initiative and your support, and we'll continue to work together.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Barbara Monahan Burke, followed by Steve Acetti.
Good afternoon, council members. I just wanted to mention that years ago Studio City was in a pilot program for recycling, and we set a really great example, and we're really pleased to be on the forefront of that. And so we do look forward, I'm with the Studio City Neighborhood Council, its vice president, and we've been working with Zero Waste Program that you have initiated, and we really look forward to this as a great beginning step that everybody can do throughout the city. So I applaud you for it and look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Steve Acetti.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the council. I'm the director of the California Coastal Coalition, of which the city's a member, and we appreciate your support. We have 35 coastal cities, five counties, SCAG, Ambag, Sandag, and we've been working, our organization the last two years has been working really hard on the issue of marine debris. We've attended the Ad Hoc River Committee meetings. We were a member of the Plastics Task Force a couple of years ago. And without hearing what's to take place here today, what I would like to report on is that I just came back from Washington, D.C. Our organization filed an appropriations request with Senator Feinstein and Representative CAFS for a million and a half dollars to go to the state's "Thank You Ocean" campaign. We're trying to create a statewide public awareness campaign so that while the cities and the counties are doing what they have to do to deal with litter and marine debris, we start educating the public about the impacts of not taking care of trash properly that ends up in the ocean and on the beaches. And the state has promised to match that amount if we're able to get that appropriation from Congress. The other thing we're working on is we have a legislator in Sacramento who's going to pull together all the stakeholders at the state level, the head of DOC, the head of the State Coastal Conservancy, the head of the Ocean Protection Council, I, WMB, you know, everybody who's got a stake in this problem are going to meet in a legislator's office and figure out where Prop 84 money is, where bottle bill money is, and create a statewide policy and a statewide funding program so that cities and counties can get grants to do the kinds of things that you're talking about today. It's unbelievable that there's not a statewide comprehensive program for cities to be able to go get money and do these things, but we're working to fix that.
Thank you very much. With that, there are no further cards on number three. Any comments from colleagues?
I do have a few remarks. First, I want to thank Councilman Smith for working on this motion with us and making sure we put this together. In terms of the notion of measurable goals, I do know we have, perhaps we have staff come to the table for answers on some questions or concerns I have.
Tell me how fast you want to turn the feasibility study over so we can get it back.
One of the objectives we have is to measure how effective we are as a city, and looking at our ability to measure, I think, is important. I do know the county set this 30% by 2011, but are we in a position as a city to actually assess what our plastic bag recycling levels are like? What is the performance of our blue bins? Do you have the ability to understand that? And if we can measure it, what is realistic for us? I would love to say 40, 50, 60%, but realities tell us differently. Let's understand those realities, but do we have that perspective, given the performance and management practices that you have in place when we look at the realities of what the Blue Bin program is actually doing?
Councilmember Reyes, Enrique Zaldivar, Director of the Bureau of Sanitation, and I want to thank you and every one of the council members on tackling this subject that touches just about everything and everybody, certainly water and land. With respect to what our efforts have yielded so far, we made plastic bags recyclable back in 2006, July 1 of 2006. And we always give ourselves a year's time of ramping up and education, but I can tell you, though, that our efforts have been fruitful. We have in total pounds of how much bags, how many bags we have recycled, it's close to a million pounds, pounds, not tons, pounds, of plastic bags. As light as they are, folks are in fact responding to our efforts, which is encouraging, it's more than encouraging. Our intent back then was that while the debate went on about what to ultimately do with plastic bags, it was important that we made them recyclable. So we did that, working with all of you. Quantifiably speaking, council member, we do have good numbers in terms of how the average resident is responding to that, on both single-family and multifamily.
So can we start establishing thresholds or measurements that can actually give us a sense of progress and allow us to look at what more we need to do to change the way our infrastructure works so that we can push this to the next level?
I think we have a couple of other measurement points. Certainly, what we are capturing in the way of recycling is one, but there's also the one about what is still going to the ocean, and you know, that's on the water side of our business, if you will, and that's when we deal with the Prop O and the TMDLs, the Trash TMDL, and the marine environment. And if I can defer to Sharam to give you what quantification we have so far of what our efforts have yielded there, and what we can quantifiably tell you, okay, this is what we believe we're capturing of plastic bags or other debris not going into the ocean. We do have some quantification in that regard. Sharam, can you elaborate on that, please?
Yes. Good afternoon, Sharam Khairani, Watershed Protection, Bureau of Sanitation. As Director Zaldivar indicated, that we have the Trash TMDL. We have had it on the books since 2002, and our compliance has started back in 2006. Every September, we have to show a reduction of 10% in the trash that is generated in the city. The Trash TMDL is a technology-based TMDL, and within the documents, they ask us to use technologies, what we call full-capture devices, and those you have seen, what we call catch-facing screens, that goes on the opening of the catch-facing that goes to our stone drain system. Thus far, in order for us to comply with the past three years, 10%, 10%, and 10%, now we are at 30%, we have installed 14,700 catch-facing screens in the city. We started with what we call hotspots, the areas that they generate the most of the trash in the city. And we have also installed 7,400 catch-facing inserts. These are the one inside the catch-facing. And as again Director Zaldivar indicated that, we were lucky to have money from Prop O. The sum of $27 million were spent for these two numbers that I mentioned to you. The average cost is about $1,200 for the screens and $700 for the inserts. The good part about the Trash TMDL is that the documents, the legal documents, the Clean Water Act, it says that if we have installed these, we do not have to monitor. The monitoring is the most expensive part because it's perpetual and goes for eternity. Because our plan was submitted to the Regional Board and was certified and approved, that if you saturate the entire city's catch-facing with these technologies, you don't have to monitor. But just our own monitoring, just to provide you some numbers, and these are not the most, in the Los Angeles watershed I'm talking about, Los Angeles River, on an average year, usually at the end of Long Beach, when everything ends up, you're talking about 6,000 to 7,000 tons of trash. I use trash very loosely because, as you know, when you do the trash characterization, it has many different components. Plastics, obviously, is a major part of it, 60 to 70%. What we have, you know, what I call man-made trash plus the yard trimming. So on a given year, the 7,000, I have noticed that the numbers right now that I'm getting from Long Beach has gone down to 3,000 to 4,000. But keep in mind, besides our catch-facing technology, it's very much function of the rain event. We have too much rain, too much trash, less rain, less trash. So there are a lot of variables involved here.
And I appreciate the explanation. I'm trying to focus and almost get surgical to the notion of plastic bags, the impact on plastic bags. So I know we're just starting when we introduced the plastic bag recycling program, we win that motion, I thank my colleagues for supporting that, that was two years ago. And so as you said, we've gone through a process, and we're learning from our actions. There's a lot of plastic bag still sitting out in these hotspots. We got the screens, but we have yet to evolve as a city to get Street Services and/or DOT to coordinate so that we can pick up these plastic bags off the streets, off the curbs, and actually see a visual impact. That hasn't happened yet. So from my point of view, we need to get there if we're truly going to make a difference in this quality of life and in these environmental issues. So I want to get very specific to the plastic bag and how we get to that measuring point. And I do have a, I'm hoping I get support on a motion for some instructions, but I'll stop here and listen to my colleagues.
Okay, great. Thank you, Sharam. Mr. Laban, you would like to comment?
Thank you very much, members, and thank all of us from all the various committees here. The absolute number-one thing I'd like to ban is litter in Los Angeles, more than anything else. And I asked, and is there a city attorney here? Is the city attorney could hear me there? He's in Northern League of Rocky Dog Deal. I do have an ordinance pending. There's the city attorney, you'll approve it right there, good job. To try to, right now, we have a street cleaning system, which I truly believe, members, all of us, should be transferred from Street Services to Sanitation. You have one entity that's responsible for everything that's in the gutter and in the drain, and that's sanitation. Right now, it's Street Services and sanitation. I believe, well, we're not, it's not by force, but I think that should be done. And also, you have to create, usually in the afternoon, when I came home and it wasn't football season, I'd watch TV, and there was Perry Mason. Exhibit A, right here. This is a drain, right there, I'm going to pass it. Exhibit B, all these are inset, I'm going to share them with the committee and then with our team folks. We, you go right out here to First and Main right now, and it's caked. I inspected it this morning, it's caked of the inset drain. We have to figure out a system. On the Sunday that it rained, I kicked out 14 drains because it was flooding the neighborhoods that I would come and just, I'm not going to do it here, kick the drain open because it was flooding over the curb. I don't know if we had, have we had any claims for damages for flooding? Or have you checked with the clerk's office? Because I know at Sunset and Descanso, at that corner, that little restaurant, got curbed over flooding. Now, the first thing, so all that being said, if we technically want to do something, we got to improve the condition of street cleaning in Los Angeles. 86% of all debris in the city of Los Angeles is in one foot of the curb. It just finds its way there, and it does. Now, I appreciate what people want to ban stuff because it's a method, but I also think of the people who are not with vehicle and don't have a bag, but they're carrying to their home, and remember how just recently the bag industry put handles together on this here. So I'm just concerned when people would be able to drop their material. This all being said, A, I want to see the city attorney develop a, similar to the $45 street cleaning ticket, a ticket for litter, and a ticket for shopkeepers for not maintaining the front of their curb. We have to have a shared partnership to be successful. We have to have cooperation. Yesterday, Cynthia Ruiz, President Board of Public Works, kicked off, kicked off the Keep America Beautiful campaign with a partnership. We could ban everything, but unless we're cleaning the streets or cleaning the gutters rights, it's still going to be there. And I feel for Long Beach, I feel for Bologna Creek, because it all ends up there. If it's not in the gutter, it's not going to go down the drain. So one thing, who's the CLA's representative here? I want a motion, and I don't know if it's a charter change, I truly believe all street cleaning should be in sanitation. When I was in New York City once...
Mr. Laban, I can make a suggestion to you, we're about to go through the budget hearings, and maybe what you're talking about is a strategic, possibly strategic budget recommendation, it may be a consolidation, who knows? But if I were you, my suggestion is to put together a motion and let's do it through budget and finance.
I will take care of your suggestion and do it in a part there, but just to, but I also want to say that, members, we have to lower the fines $1,000 for littering. And there's been, I think, no tickets issued for littering in Los Angeles. There've been tickets for illegal dumping, but no tickets for littering. And the number-one illegal dump spot in the city of Los Angeles is in the 4th District, right next to the L.A. River at Duran, where we want the Trashed Energy Plant that Mr. Smith is shepherding with his leadership approved by Mr. Reyes. Still got a community process. Littering, street cleaning, and then a special system. You got your big vacuum trucks, about 43 over at Doris Place. Get that little vacuum out.
Thank you. Thank you for the sound effects. And also, I wanted to welcome Mr. Alarcon, who I couldn't see through the screen here, but he is here, too. Any other comments from colleagues, dare I ask?
I have some instructions as well.
Mr. Smith, and before Mr. Smith starts, I just want to say one thing to you, Mr. Khairani and your team. You know, I was on the Inyo County, L.A. County Standing Committee for the Department of Water and Power. One of the things that they do up in Bishop, California, and it might be something that you can do, as we get to areas, they actually take small bales of hay and insert them into the openings of the sewer to catch the trash. It's pretty inexpensive, and you know, they're easy to take out and replace, and it's possibly a good measure to implement when you need something that's quick before you get into an area where we know we already have flooding. So I make that suggestion to you, and if you need photographs from up there, I'm sure we can get the Department of Water and Power up there to photograph and email them down to you. Mr. Smith?
Councilmember Perry, if I may say, you know, we own the farm up in Kern County where we produce the hay.
Well, we might want to ship some hay down here for ourselves.
Settle back ourselves, make profit.
Make some hay, okay? Mr. Smith?
Are we going to do instructions or are we just doing comments?
I have instructions. If I may, and it's really just repeating what I had asked for before, and we expect to get a response, but ask the Sanitation and Environmental Affairs Department and General Services Department to come back in six days with a comprehensive recommendation that focuses on gradual transition using measurable timeline to a fee-based system. Again, we're looking at a fee for single bags or no fees for reusable bags. So that's something that we have spoken to before in Ad Hoc River Committee, and it's hoping that can come to fruition. And as you know, the law does not regulate businesses under 10,000 square feet. And for example, District 1, that's a very prominent characteristic when it comes to business sizes, because for the most part, most of the city is built up by small and medium-sized businesses. But in my district in particular, I don't have the opportunity for these great big stores, there are very few. And so the impact of the 10,000 underneath, under the 10,000 square foot business size is critical. So if we can come back with a recommendation that focuses on measurable goals with milestones and a fee-based system for that range of stores, or that range of businesses, because again, that'll help capture what exists in the first ring of neighborhoods around downtown.
We will. Thank you.
And I have a few also, and I'll give you a written copy of this, you don't have to write it down, but we'll present one to the clerk as well. So the first one is that the Heal the Bay proposal to ban plastic bags in the city and exempt retailers that charge a per-bag fee that can be directed toward education and recycling programs, if you could comment on the feasibility of that. Examine at what point the per-bag fee is a true disincentive to single-use bags, and I think there's some ample research on that in the Ireland case that we can look at. Address any Prop 18 problems we may have in instituting a fee. Unlike some places in the country, we got that hurdle to jump through, so. Address the phasing proposal that takes into account the size of the store, which Mr. Reyes just mentioned, and the number of locations, giving a longer time for compliance for mom-and-pop stores, and I think that was what you just said. Also, report back on the feasibility of banning or charging a fee for paper bags so that we're not trading one one-time-use product for another. And I think is a real policy decision we need to have on how we look at paper bags as well as plastic bags. And then finally, report back within a week on any recommendations for position on the county-sponsored Mike Davis legislation on this, and I think they've proposed some things. I haven't read anything on it yet, but if you could check back with us on that, I'd appreciate that.
Is it state-sponsored?
Yeah, they asked for state-sponsored legislation. The county, yeah, Mike Davis carrying it for the county.
Okay, great. Ms. Ruhl.
Quick on a process question, is the idea that we're going to, these questions will all be asked today, and then they'll come back in 30, what's, how many, what's it, 60 days? Did you say 60?
I mean, if I can add a 30, that'd be great.
I was going to offer another suggestion.
Okay.
You know, one of the speakers earlier mentioned our zero-waste and sewer process, which your staff is definitely familiar with, and some of you have joined us in that. The intent of that process all along has been to produce a policy report inclusive of things like what the policy recommendation from us to you would be on plastic bags and polystyrene. Now, that report is going to be out in May for around Cinco de Mayo, May 5, but we can do a piece that's specific on plastic bags and polystyrene and have it thoroughly researched and everything forwards and backwards in July, in July. So if that seems reasonable to you, that's what I am proposing, that's what I'm suggesting, that you direct us to come back.
Mr. Smith and Mr. Rual, were you on?
Yeah, and I think the Environmental Affairs Department's going to comment quickly, and then I just want to ask one question.
I would like to also suggest maybe an alternative viewpoint in the analysis, and that would be to also analyze what is the cost to the city of not implementing a ban. The city of San Francisco did a study, and they estimated that the costs are 17 cents per plastic bag to the city for trash pickup, for disposal. It's especially something that EAD and our LEA deal with on a constant basis because of bags flying around landfills and going away from them, then also the contamination of the composting with bags of the green bins, things like that are, so I think if, part of the analysis would be very helpful if we could take a look at the cost of the city, and we may find that San Francisco did, is that the costs were so significant, 17 cents for 50 million bags per year, that they couldn't afford not to ban.
And on that point, and you may find, and I've had some discussions with some experts in this field, that their analysis may have been a little short, actually, because they didn't take into a lot of other, count a lot of other social costs and stuff. They just look at hard dollar amounts that they could really quantify easily, and so there's more in the ether than just what they did in their report. So maybe we'll get you some more information on that, but I think if you look at it, what San Francisco did was a good start, but it may be actually much larger than that.
I think as part of that, analyzing all of this, which is some charts that, and again, that may be the July, depending on, that compare other cities, and not only, I mean, at every different level, I mean, some are city counties, some have landfills in their cities, some are charging, some aren't charging, you know, they're banning them whole, you know, wholly, so to look at that, because we all see, and I think Mr. Laban's point was well taken, that, you know, it is about trash and changing consumers' behaviors more so than anything else, because we can continue to ban certain products, and there's going to be something else that's going to come up that if a consumer doesn't understand their role in recycling and being able to put that trash where it needs to go, we're going to continue to spin our wheels. And so I think that that educational aspect of it is critically important to be able to change those behaviors, and so interested as you come back on a piece on how that educational program will actually work to change people's behaviors, no matter what it is that we have, I think. But we all, we all drive down the road and see those plastic bags flying, whether it be on the freeway or the roadway, or see them on the side of the road, so. Thank you, Ms. Perry.
Thank you, Ms. Ruhl. Mr. Reyes, did you want to say anything else off the timeframe?
Well, just in terms of, I mean, for me, the urgency is now, but I also know that we're putting a lot on your table, and there's a lot that needs to be understood, and I'd like to get a report back that is of substance. So I don't want to put out official dates, say, you know, 30, how long do you need? I mean, my instinct tells me, you want to wait to put this report for July?
July, complete report, thorough.
Could we get a draft of what you're writing so that we get a stronger sense of the direction of the report, so that we don't have to wait another 30, 8, or 6 days?
You can get a draft in 30 days.
If you leave something out, so at least, you know, it's, we're engaging each other in such a way where we come up with something that reflects our priorities?
A draft, and I'll line up some kind, yes.
It's still a draft, yeah.
If I may add to that, I think it's very important that we see something before July, because if we want to fund it for the July 1 budget year, we have to see it in April, May. So we really, if you wait to release in July, we're not going to see anything as a cost factor until it's next year. So I think we need some look forward, unless you can, unless we can say we're going to dedicate a funding source towards whatever comes out of it, whether it's a surcharge at Sunshine Canyon or whatever may be, whatever options are out there. If we can dedicate a source, then we don't have to worry about specific dollar amounts, but if we're going to say it's going to cost us a million dollars to do this, we need to know that in the budget process in May.
Okay.
How's the middle of June?
Well, again...
How about late April?
Because of what you just said, Councilmember Reyes, I think your expectation is that we give you something that is complete and thorough, well researched. The county presented a report to the County Board of Supervisors, they had some depth, but certainly not the depth that we intend to bring to you. Santa Monica took some action not long ago, I think it was also a report that had some depth, but not the kind of depth that we... I think it was also a report that had some depth, but not the kind of depth that we would offer to bring to you. So we do need more time, so if, if July is too late.
Well, I was going to suggest, if you're going to say July has to be July, then you include in your report back funding sources and where we could dedicate revenue streams that are not currently in the budget, or could be moved from another project to this, because if it's going to be in this fiscal year, there's no way to do it.
Well, let's get a, how about a draft late April?
A draft in April. Okay.
Okay, that'll get us some direction.
Okay.
Okay, any other, Mr. Allerton?
Yeah, are we talking about two different things? You're talking about a full report on zero waste, and we're requesting information specifically about plastic bags.
No, what I offered was the element specific on plastic bags and polystyrene, extracted from the bigger zero-waste report, extracted from it.
Okay, and you're going to get us a draft by the end of April?
April.
Okay, I think that would help. Secondly, I would ask that you investigate any state regulations that might impede our ability to move forward and recommend legislative ideas and work with the CLA to recommend some legislative ideas of how we might expedite these programs.
In fact, there's some good news in that front right now. Neil, if you want, there's a bill.
Well, I'm not asking.
Okay.
There may be one thing happening, but maybe there's more ideas that can emerge.
Okay.
So I want to keep open-minded about that. And with regard to the 17 cents that San Francisco calculated, I don't know whether that factors in the replacement for the bags and what the cost for the replacement was. Can you tell me? You're looking at the pictures too, huh?
Sorry.
I did that on purpose, I'm just kidding. But the question is, your 17 cents calculation, did that include the cost of the replacement for the plastic bags?
No, it was just the cost to the city of cleaning up.
So we don't know what the replacement of the plastic bags was and how much that might cost?
Oh, in San Francisco, they replaced them with compostable bags, and probably in their report, there is the cost of replacement.
Okay, yeah, I think, I think that's important. Thirdly, there's a motion that I introduced as an incentive to businesses to be green, a green certification program for businesses, and I think an important part to this to expedite our ability is to create incentives. So is, can environmental affairs incorporate it to the notion of the green certificate program, which includes the small businesses, retail, the liquor stores and the small grocery stores that use plastic bags all the time, can incorporate into the green certification program the notion that if you don't use plastic bags, if you use a more environmental option, that you would then hasten your way to the green certificate?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Another quick question. Mr. Labonge?
Yeah, on a matter here, the fourth, I would like the Planning Department require that any restaurant that serves takeaway food have to have a serviced trash can they service in front of their business with a revocable permit, non-fee permit, meaning if we tell J. Burgers, McDonald's, whatever the thing would be, that you have to have a trash can there, you got to service it and be responsible for it. There's nothing worse than a city trash can that overflows because sanitation should be taking care of those trash cans, not city services. Also on that, and one other question I wanted to ask you, right now in my blue bin at our home, you could take the plastic that is around the LA Times that comes to my house in the morning, right? And what happens sometimes because of the style of the operator, when he goes up, the plastic bags sometimes fly into the sky as well, so they miss the collection on that. And I don't know how you prevent that, but.
Well, that's part of our learning as well, including the trucks, Councilmember Grul mentioned that on the freeways, our trucks used to also have bags come out. We had to make changes to the hopper, or that doesn't happen.
Right, so on that issue. But also, the Planning Department asked for them to look at that particular issue there that they would require in a cooperative way with the California Restaurants Association. Hey, a clean business, people are going to come in, whether they see trash and debris or not, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge. All right, and with that, you have your instructions, CLA was able to incorporate that into.
So, Madam Chair, so the instruction is to continue the motion, have them report back to the Joint Committee or separate committees in mid-April with a status slash draft report.
We'll probably do a joint, it's more, joint, it's more efficient.
Okay.
Yeah. But we're not, I just want to make sure, we're not, we're separating the implementation of the polystyrene.
Yeah, some plastics only.
Right, okay.
Okay, thanks. Well, without objection, that'll be the order, and we'll see you back here in approximately 30 days for our next joint gathering on this item. And now, we will go back to, did you want to say something? Sometimes it's better to stop. Mr., I have five degrees, okay? Did you want to say something, Mr. Carrigan?
No, he doesn't.
But I always enjoy, I always enjoy hearing your voice over and over and over again. Thank you. Number one, and number two will be next, and.
Staff report from the CIO and Sanitation.
All right, all of our same friends are here. Okay, great, why don't you begin?
Sir Ibago with the CIO's office.
We'll take one and two together.
Sir Ibago with the CIO's office, our office received instruction to coordinate a response to this first motion. We worked with the lead departments Bureau of Sanitation and Environmental Affairs and staff from Councilmember Reyes's office, and based on the motion and subsequent discussions, it was determined that the report would focus on polystyrene. The report provides context, issues for consideration, and provides some policy recommendations, specifically that the Bureau of Sanitation be directed to develop an implementation plan to ban polystyrene at city departments and at city-sponsored events, and also to direct General Services and Bureau of Sanitation to work together to implement a plan or develop a plan to coordinate the citywide facilities recycling program.
Neil Guglielmo with the Bureau of Sanitation, Civil Recycling Division. As Sir I mentioned, we have worked closely with our CIO analyst. We've also had an opportunity to meet with representatives from the General Services Department and Environmental Affairs Department, Beth, to discuss the issues of the polystyrene, the response regarding the ban and use of that material in city facilities, and then in terms of the recommendations, the report. So in the CIO's report, we have provided information on the status of various initiatives in the city already. There are recommendations on how to incorporate what we've done in the Blue Bean Program for our residential customers, as well as into the city facilities recycling program. And so we're happy to answer any questions you have. The recommendations that we submitted in our transmittal on January 14th basically are also before you. They do complement the CIO's report, I think fairly well. The one major change is that in our report, the, I should say, in the Bureau's transmittal, we have the recommendation for the Food Services polystyrene ban in city facilities to be effective June 30th, 2008, and then there's instruction there for General Services and Bureau of Sanitation to report back with an implementation plan to do that. And the CIO's report, it does talk about the, that same implementation plan to report back in 60 days, so it's just a question of when we get the direction from the mayor and the council. So, and then also, there's an item in the CIO's report to include support for a state legislative program that would urge the state to expand efforts to develop markets through the state for the use of recyclable materials, so we have more options basically to sell our recyclable materials, and it would have greater value as well.
Great. Mr. Carrigan?
Nothing to add, I'm sure, unless you have a specific question.
Okay, thank you. All right, all right, well then why don't we begin with our first, our presentation by Dean Kubani from the city of Santa Monica? Come on up to the table.
Madam Chair, is coming up, could we ask questions of the staff after the presentation?
Sure, if you don't mind sort of hang around and stay here.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. I'm Dean Kubani, I'm the Environmental Programs Manager for the city of Santa Monica, and I was asked to come and give you a brief presentation on our non-recyclable plastic food container ban, and I'm also going to touch a little bit on recent action our council took with plastic bags. I know that what you're discussing today is focused internally within your city operations, but I think a lot of what we did in Santa Monica is also applicable to the city of Los Angeles. Here's a quick timeline of actions that were taken in Santa Monica. Back in June 2006, our council asked staff to prepare an ordinance banning non-recyclable plastic food containers. In February of '07, they unanimously adopted that ordinance. In February of this year, that ordinance went into effect for businesses, and about a week ago, council directed staff to prepare another ordinance banning plastic carryout bags and also look into putting fees on paper bags. The reason that Santa Monica City Council was interested in doing this was what you're all aware of, litter and trash issues, and because Santa Monica's at the end of the pipe, we see a lot of this stuff. This is probably going to be hard to read on these screens, but it shows a breakdown of the trash that was collected on the beach from a 2005 beach cleanup throughout the year. The top two items that we collected were non-recyclable plastic and expanded polystyrene, representing about 65% of all the trash that ends up on Santa Monica beaches, and this is a pretty consistent amount, and that's why this stuff is being targeted. It's very lightweight, it blows out of trash cans, it blows out of trash trucks, and it ends up in the beach and it doesn't go away. Here's a picture of a typical day after a storm on Santa Monica Beach, so this is a big issue, and this is something that we don't, it impacts our ability to attract tourists to our beach, so we certainly want to address it. The solutions to this are alternative materials, which are, number one, less likely to blow out of trash cans, less likely to break apart and be used as food by marine animals, some of the alternatives biodegrade in the environment and are compostable, and all the alternatives are recyclable. What we did once council directed us to prepare an ordinance has went out, and we met with a number of businesses, and we did surveys of the businesses. Our city staff with students from Santa Monica College conducted one survey, the Santa Monica Chamber of Commerce conducted another survey, the California Restaurant Association, the American Chemistry Council conducted another survey. The results of those were slightly different, but in general, what they showed was that a ban on expanded polystyrene would affect at a minimum about 150 businesses in Santa Monica, and up to a maximum of about 300 businesses. What we found on potential economic impacts were very difficult to determine because we had difficulty getting information from the businesses on what they were using, and also because of the wide variability of alternative products. If you're switching from polystyrene to a recyclable plastic, there's one cost, to a paper product or to a biodegradable product, there's another cost, and depending on the volume, it's really difficult to assess that, and also when you're looking at the amount of use. By a small business or by a very large business, it varies quite a bit. But for the most part, we found an impact on a monthly basis from either no impact at all to about $180 per month for a high-volume user switching from a biodegradable or a polystyrene product to a biodegradable product. We also found that food containers typically represent about 1% of business overhead costs in food service businesses, and they're often passed on to customers. And that was backed up by a ban on polystyrene products in Malibu, where we saw that a number of businesses were charging a fee for their alternative products and passing that on to the customers. In some cases, they were charging a nickel fee per container, and when the additional cost may have been a penny or two, so they were actually making money on the ordinance. We also found that through our surveys, up to 45% of the food service providers in Santa Monica were not using any expanded polystyrene at the time we did the service. This was before we made the ban. So there were a number of businesses that were operating quite well and competitively in the city without any problem, without using polystyrene. Expanded polystyrene was banned in the cities of Portland and Berkeley in the late 80s, and we've spoken with their enforcement agencies up there, and they found that there's been no significant compliance problems up there. And we've again found that there's many businesses in Santa Monica that have been using alternatives to polystyrene for many years without any problems at all. And in fact, some of them have reported that in marketing their businesses as green businesses, it helps them in not using these products. The products that are compliant with Santa Monica's ordinance include coated paper, aluminum, recyclable plastics, compostable and biodegradable products. We've exempted things like straws and cutlery and lids because discussions with industry, particularly folks in the grocery industry, have found a difficult time finding products that aren't made out of non-recyclable plastic lids and cutlery and some of those other things. So we chose to make that exempt and just focus on containers. This ordinance applied to city staff and all city operations as well as businesses, so in that respect, it is similar to what you're proposing here. It went into effect immediately for city staff in February of 2007 and addressed city operations, all city-sponsored events, city-managed concessions, as well as city-permitted events, so any event at our park that we're issuing a permit for needs to comply with this as well. And in February 2008, February 9th, this went into effect, and it applies to all food service providers in Santa Monica, including restaurants, catering companies and food trucks that operate in Santa Monica, supermarkets, grocery stores that have delis, bakeries, delicatessens, nonprofit groups that are providing feeding programs for homeless and other folks, as well as hospitals. Now, some of the work that we did prior to implementation of this ordinance, we prepared a lot of information, we put together a very detailed website, it's difficult to see on this slide, but we can give you the information, and there's a ton of information on here that has been widely used by the businesses and city staff in implementing the ordinance. We've done a number of mailers, numerous presentations, meetings with the Chamber of Commerce, meetings with individual businesses, we've brought product distributors out to meet with restaurants and other food service providers to introduce them and help them find products that they can get. And here's just some photos of a number of the pieces that we put together, outreach pieces, to help businesses become informed about this program and provide, find out where that they can get information on the alternative products and compliance. This is a FAQ piece that's on our website that talks about the ordinance and all the issues related to it. This is a list of providers of biodegradable and recyclable plastic food service containers that we put together. These are folks that are currently being used by the city and by a number of businesses. We've checked all of them out, and again, we've put them in touch with, or put restaurants in touch with them, trying to make it very easy for folks to comply. Here's a mailer that we just put out. We recently had a couple of events where we got every kind of alternative product that complied with the ordinance so that businesses could come out and take a look at what types of products were out there and find out where they can get them and meet suppliers. And we worked very extensively with our city staff everywhere that we have food service provision, at our civic auditorium, our senior center, and a lot of the human services programs. These are folks out at the Santa Monica Airport, and I'll really quickly go through a bunch of shots. We've worked with a number of restaurants, these are all people displaying the various alternative products that they're currently using in their restaurants and stores throughout the city. This was a restaurant, Euphoria, that's been buying biodegradable takeout containers for a number of years. They even set up a composting collection. They even set up a composting collection facility within their restaurant, and our solid waste division is collecting all that and helping get that composted. Implementation and enforcement, again, this ordinance went into effect in the beginning of February of this year. It's a complaint-based enforcement. We received 10 complaints within the first three days, and we've received seven additional ones since then. So actually 17 complaints from residents reporting to our office that people are not complying with the ordinance. Every one of those complaints has been resolved without any fines being issued at this point. A couple of the folks didn't know that the ordinance was in place. Most of the folks were using up old materials and weren't aware of the start date. They've all switched over to alternatives. Overall, we've seen excellent compliance among businesses within Santa Monica. Folks like Jamba Juice, who were really concerned about this, initially switched over. El Pollo Loco, Panda Express, these companies that have large volumes and use a lot of polystyrene, have been switching over, and we've not heard any reported problems from these folks at all. With regard to plastic bags, last week, our city council directed staff to prepare an ordinance banning single-use plastic carryout bags in Santa Monica, and to develop a fee for single-use paper bags. We've done a lot of research on this, and we've seen that voluntary recycling programs for plastic bags are not effective. There was a program in San Francisco that, when San Francisco, a couple of years ago, were proposing a fee on plastic bags, the grocers came in and said, "Hold off for a year and let us do a recycling program." San Francisco said, "Okay, you do that, but you need to meet a collection target." And it was a very low target, I believe it was 10 percent. The stores didn't meet that. San Francisco then went ahead with a ban. There was another program nationwide in Australia that started in 2002. They spent about $50 million promoting plastic bag recycling. They saw the recycling rates rise moderately, but they saw very little change in consumer behavior, and they saw no impact on the litter problem at the end. So there's a number of other programs, a lot of the stuff, research has been done in Australia, that shows that the recycling programs, which aren't effective at the end-of-the-pipe problem, which is cleaning up the litter. That's why we recommended a ban, because currently AB 2449 prohibits a fee on plastic bags. The best environmental, the best possible solution from an environmental point of view is to use reusable bags. So by putting a fee on paper bags, which are a single-use product and have environmental impacts of their own, which in some cases are very significant, we've seen that fees, particularly in Ireland, in Australia, and a number of other parts of the world, are very effective at getting people to bring their own bags, provided the fees are set at a high enough level. We are currently investigating what level to set, and if this is feasible in Santa Monica, but we expect if we are able to combine a ban on plastic bags with a fee on paper, that it will be very effective at getting people to bring their own bags in Santa Monica. And I will, let me, two last quick points. We're developing the ordinance right now. We expect to go back to council, late spring or early summer, for the first reading of that ordinance, and we would be very happy to share all the information, all the research that we've done with your folks here. Thanks very much.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker will be Michael Mazremus. And Michael, just, I think Michael is making a short presentation.
I'd like to thank Mr. Kubani. Again, thank you, sir, for coming to City Hall, to Los Angeles, and there's a lot we've learned. It's great to see these demonstrations actually have results, and although our focus is on just city facilities at this time, one, sir, I think, learned from our growing pains, will hopefully keep expanding, but thank you so much for your making the trip and your patience for being here. Thank you.
Thank you. Are you Mr. Mazremus? Okay, we don't have enough space for everybody. How much space do you need?
At least myself.
Okay. All right, and we have a lot of speaker cards here today, so if you can be very direct. You can just give it to the CLA, and the CLA can pass it out for you. And we're going to have to move pretty quickly, okay, because we have a large stack of cards, and everybody wants to talk.
All right, I'll just start talking.
Yes, please.
Thank you for the opportunity. My name is Michael Mazremus. I do work for Dark Container. We manufacture polystyrene cups, other takeout disposable items. In listening to other people speak here today, I do have empathy for the situation that the Ad hoc River Committee has with the waste. Unfortunately, polystyrene being light is a very visible entity, I guess, and therefore it's targeted for a lot of issues such as the ban that's currently being considered. What I wanted to address specifically is that, in my opinion, a ban on polystyrene is not going to be a solution to what we're trying to accomplish here for a number of reasons. The first thing I wanted to mention, and it's a little bit unfair going after the gentleman from Santa Monica, because I get to sort of rebut in a way, but one of the sheets I handed out does address specifically some hardship examples of the cost of polystyrene, and I know for a fact that, he mentioned a large-volume restaurant having increased costs of $180 on average. I would suggest that a small-volume restaurant that uses polystyrene and is encouraged or forced to switch to an alternative would encounter much greater costs. In the examples I handed out, $418 in addition each month was the cost of going from a regular foam cup to a bio cup. And when you're talking about large volume polystyrene users being forced to go to an alternative, the costs increase dramatically, but the percentage is anywhere from 140 to 200-plus percent increase in costs.
Products, are you talking about compostable?
In the analysis that I handed out, it includes bioalternatives or paper alternatives. It looks at a wide.
But when you're saying bioalternative, does that mean a compostable kind of?
That would include.
But not paper stuff?
Well, in the instance of, and again, I have to apologize, I predominantly foam cups is my, I'm a salesperson. And the alternatives to foam cups right now are either full-on PET plastics or paper. And I think even Santa Monica mentioned that they banned all non-recyclables, but they're still using paper, and they're still accepting paper cup alternatives, which are neither biodegradable, compostable, nor recyclable. And that's, I guess, the second issue, aside from the hardship aspect. For foam cups, really the only alternative out there today in any quantity is a paper cup. And people think of a paper cup as being a lot more benign to start with, but what they don't take into account, and what I passed out, and I did save the one sample, is that, all I did was I cooked yesterday, I boiled some paper cups, and I was able to take the, I'm sorry, some paper cups, I was able to take the paper off the cup, and what you have is a plastic lining, which is mandatory in order to hold liquid, so it doesn't seep through. But in reality, what you have is about two-thirds of the volume of plastic as you would have in a single foam cup. So a polystyrene foam cup has more plastic, no question about it, but about a third more than a paper cup. But on top of the paper cup, you have all the paper, pulp and gluing, printing, et cetera. So from an environmental impact, there is far more negative impact in the manufacture of a paper cup than there is a single polystyrene cup. And I think even the Santa Monica gentleman would probably agree that rarely will you see a paper cup used in Santa Monica without either a Java jacket or double cupping, because it's just too hot, it's too hard to handle. So the incremental costs go larger still. And these are some of the things, beyond just the hardship, which is substantial, is the environmental impact of the alternatives are not as benign as people expect them, or as people like to believe. When you go into the bioalternatives, there are things out there that are moving in the right direction for compostability and biodegradability, and I recognize that in the future, there may be potential for those products, but currently, the compostable, compostability of those products in LA is not there. We have to ship it up to Kern County, and the biodegradability issues are still hampered with our current infrastructure because of landfills and the way it's packed and everything. But in a nutshell, I guess what I'm trying to say is, I don't believe, I believe a ban is very premature. I don't believe it will solve the environmental issues that a lot of people are facing. I think the hardship is great, and that's the perspective I wanted to bring to this meeting.
Thank you for your presentation. And now we have a number of speakers, we have 16 speaker cards. I don't know who the folks are with you, but I don't have cards from them.
Yeah, my card is probably in that stack.
Why don't you let me call, what is your name?
Sherri Boone, with American Chemistry Council.
Okay, well, if you, let me call you, and one at a time, we can come to the lectern there and state your name and your organizational name. I'm going to call a number of cards now, and same for the other gentlemen. Kirsten James, if you can come on up to the lectern, and we're going to run the timer on this, two minutes each. Steve Acetti, Andrew Casana, and Irma Munoz.
Just to clarify, are you combining one and two?
Yes, we are combining one and two.
Okay, thank you. Good afternoon, my name is Kirsten James, and I'm the Water Quality Director at Heal the Bay. We commend your committees for joining forces today to look at the impacts of polystyrene in plastic bags. The city has made major strides in reducing its solid waste. However, we believe that banning the use of polystyrene in plastic bags is necessary to achieve even greater reductions. First, to the subject of polystyrene, we think that a city facility ban is a great first step. However, this program should only take one year to implement. Since this focuses on city facilities and city-related events, it should be feasible to complete this in a year. Studies of alternatives have already been completed, Santa Monica has done a lot of the work for you already, this shouldn't be a problem in starting up. We also think you should start immediately in considering applying this to other businesses and getting this in a phase system. You know, I understand lead by example, but lead by example, and at the same time, have a timeframe for incorporating those businesses, so you're not waiting, and you're actually getting to the problem. Also, something that hasn't been mentioned is, you know, styrene is a big marine debris issue, it's impacting thousands of marine mammals each and every day, and it's also a human health issue. Styrene was detected in the fat tissue of every man, woman, and child, tested by the EPA in a 1986 study. So that's something to keep in mind. Dozens of cities have already done this, and there's no reason why LA can't also be a leader. The second topic is plastic bags. Six billion bags are used in LA County every year, and a good portion of these bags end up in landfills or the environment. A ban is by far the most effective solution for several reasons. First, less than 5 percent of the bags are recycled. Even if we miraculously get that number up to say 20 percent, that's still 4.8 million bags, and that's 4.8 million too many. Voluntary efforts don't work, you heard from Santa Monica, people support this. Day Without a Bag was a great example. We had people from communities everywhere, from the West Side to El Monte, coming out and saying, "We can do this, we can make the change, we hope you do the same."
Thank you, thank you very much. Steve Acetti, and then Andrew Casanas, and Irma Munoz, so if you can come line up. Andrew, and then Irma.
My comment on the ban on city property is that it's a little bit confusing, because the city has done an excellent job in the last six months or so of expanding recycling to plastics 1 through 7 and polystyrene. And, you know, my feeling is that on city property, with city employees eating lunch and then going back to their office, you don't have a trash problem, or a marine debris problem, in your cafeterias or in the food facilities. I'm sure city employees aren't just throwing stuff around City Hall or down in the city mall. The problem the city has in other cities up and down the coast is a trash problem and a behavior problem. And I don't, I don't think, although it's very symbolic, I don't think this ban solves the city's litter and marine debris problem. And our organization's focus is on getting funding for the cities and the counties to buy better trash receptacles, buy more receptacles, add personnel, do things that are going to get litter off the street and out of the waterways. I don't think this does that.
Thank you. Mr. Casana, and then Ms. Munoz.
Good afternoon, how's everybody doing today? Real quick, we actually met with Councilmember Labange, and actually Councilmember Reyes on several issues like this, and when Councilmember Labange was talking about the trash can issues, and trashing inside the storm drains and stuff like that, we actually proposed an adopt a trash can program. And we also support his idea about citing people for litter, because regardless of what you replace it with, and we're not saying we, we have a lot of members that use alternative packaging, so unless we start changing people's behaviors, whatever you replace it with is going to end up in that storm drain he was talking about, and it's going to end up in the waterways, and it's going to end up backing up the storm drains. So from the California Restaurant Association's perspective, we'd like to record the city, sit down, talk to you. We don't support a ban by any means, because we think the industry is moving that direction on their own, but we would like to meet with everybody.
Thank you. Ms. Munoz, and after Ms. Munoz will be Arnold Sacks and Brian Early, if you can come and get ready to speak.
Good afternoon, my name is Irma Munoz, and I'm the founder and president of an environmental women's organization called Mujeres de la Tierra. We have made the use of reusable bags in various communities a priority, and I want to talk about the plastic bags, because I testified before the county and made very similar remarks. I think that when you're in Santa Monica or in the West Side, which my parents live, I have a very different experience than when I'm in East Los Angeles, Boyle Heights, Lincoln Heights, and other places where I organize community. In West Los Angeles, people go to the trunk of their car, pull out their reusable bags, it's part of the nature, I don't know, it's ingrained from when they were little. And where I work, people don't do that. People use the plastic bags, they get at the grocery stores, so they don't have to buy other plastic bags, they use them to put their kids' lunches in it, to store other food, for other kinds of things. And the truth of the matter is, is if, in the West Side, if you buy bags, it costs $1.50 for the reusable bags, and for some families, $1.50 means eggs and milk and bread. And so I tried in good stead to work with the Grocers Association, because I think that the issue of plastic bags is not just the city's issue, not just the county's or the state's issue. I think it's a personal and public issue for all of us, that we all have to contribute to resolving the plastic bag issue, and I think it takes more than partnerships. It was just last week, foolishly, that I learned that plastic bags were, we could recycle them. So I don't even know what education campaigns took place, but apparently, they missed me and the folks that I represent completely. So when we do fund outreach programs, and we do fund these advocacy programs, they need to make sense in the communities, in all communities. Because the truth of the matter is, is what works in Santa Monica is not going to work in Lincoln Heights, or Glass Hall Park, or Baldwin Vista, or Baldwin Hills. You have to be very in tune, I guess that's it, thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Sacks, followed by Brian Early. Brian Early, are you here? Okay, great, if you can come on up. And then Tracy Chavira.
Good afternoon, thank you very much. A few things, just to point out that the influx of plastic was a result of the ecology movement back in the 70s to save a tree, so there was a real demand to create plastic so that you weren't using paper products. Now there's a reverse of the trend, to go move away from plastic and paper to something else, to be kept in the back of people's minds. Need to set realistic benchmarks, like the previous speaker just mentioned, things that happened, and the Santa Monica report showed that large companies were able to switch, but did they impose a fee? And they were able to absorb the impact of the biodegradable uses, the biodegradable materials, more easier than the small mom-and-pop areas and small stores that would be affected by this change. And also, you're looking to change people's behaviors, you need to change availability, and that would be a start to change people's behavior. And the San Francisco study, if it already found that the cost of picking up trash and plastic is at least 17 cents, I doubt that the study in LA will find it to be cheaper, so I really don't even think there would be a study necessary. You already have a benchmark to look at right there. And if it's costing San Francisco 17 cents, and there's, and the size of that city for its plastic, and LA is maybe one and a half times bigger, it's probably costing LA, without even doing the study, 20 cents per bag. Thank you for your time and your patience and your attention.
Thank you very much. Mr. Early and Tracy Chavira.
Councilmembers, my name is Brian Early, I'm with Californians Against Waste, we're a statewide environmental organization. On behalf of our Southern California members, CW urges as council, ban plastic bags and expanded polystyrene food packaging as promptly as possible. This is definitely a problem of, problem material. Plastic bags and expanded polystyrene have specific properties that again and again make them show up at the very top of beach cleanup studies. You've heard from Heal the Bay, their effects on the marine environment in terms of choking endangered turtles, marine wildlife, birds. Both items are very difficult to recycle. Plastic bags are currently recycled at a rate of about less than 5... Plastic bags are currently recycled at a rate of about less than 5%. EPS takeout food packaging is extremely difficult to recycle, even in this city where EPS or PS is accepted in the blue bin. If it's at all contaminated, it gets tossed out. So especially with EPS, we do not see recycling as the solution at all. There are some bills floating around, some of which, you know, CW is sponsoring, we support all of them. AB 904 FEAR would phase out the use of non-recyclable takeout food packaging. There's AB 2058 that was introduced just recently by some of Lloyd Levine, which would set some benchmarks for plastic bags. But CW has strongly been advocating for the banning of these two materials at the local level. We've had some success. We definitely think that in terms of studies, enough studying has been done, and any study should be very, very prompt. Again, this is about a problem material. I mean, disposable items are bad across the board. When you do an LCA and look at the production from a greenhouse gas perspective, there's going to be a couple differences. But what's really important for cities and for policymakers is to take into account litter, the special properties that plastic bags and EPS have on the marine environment. So in sum, I would urge you to ban these materials as promptly as possible. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Tracy Chavira, followed by Tony Riegos. And after Tony Riegos will be Chris, I think it's Chung.
Tracy Chavira from Central City Association. While CCA supports the city's efforts to reduce, reuse, and recycle, we do not support a ban on polystyrene. Banning polystyrene is not the solution to diverting trash from landfills and reducing litter, especially since polystyrene is recyclable in the city's blue bins. Polystyrene is not only recyclable, but is affordable and a superior choice for food service packaging. The real problem lies with those who choose not to recycle. Therefore, CCA supports more collaborative solutions, including anti-litter programs that inform the public about the damage litter inflicts on our environment, as well as programs that educate consumers about opportunities they have to recycle the products they use. A more thorough review of this proposal is necessary to ensure that a city, that the city is not simply replacing one material for another, but that it is changing consumer behavior. CCA strongly encourages the city to conduct a thorough analysis to determine whether the proposed ban would achieve the stated goals and would not come with unintended environmental and economic consequences. Thank you for your leadership, and we appreciate the opportunity to voice our concerns as you deliberate on this important environmental issue.
Thank you. Tony Riegos, following Tony will be Chris Chung.
Good afternoon, everybody. I'm here representing one group of people that is being forgotten for all this conversation I'm hearing. I work in a packaging company in the city industry. I just celebrated three years of working in that company. When we, when we talk about banning things and no more this, no more this, no more that, we don't take into account that we're losing a lot of jobs with that. When we close, we ban something, company's going to close. And at the end, we're going to end up sending it to China because of labor prices. I have a very good union pay job, which I was able to put my children to college and having a good life. Don't forget when you make your decisions that the blue collar workers got hurt every time a company closed. And I will appreciate all your effort, and thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you very much. Chris Chung, followed by Hector Ramirez.
Hi, my name is Chris Chung. I'm with Wonder Bakery in Chinatown, retail bakery. Yes, I'm here to ask you to, right now, not to ban the styrofoam, because it will definitely increase our cost right now, financial difficulty too. And I think that's not the solution to take care of the littering situation. I think the human being are just creature of habit, and styrofoam's not the answer to ban the styrofoam. Because if they used paper instead of styrofoam, they would steal litter. So that's not the solution. I think the answer is to put up more sign for littering, sign with penalties, put on it, $50 for the first time, $100, $200 for second and third time, things like that. Ask the police to enforce it, write tickets, and put up more chat bins in the street, and educate these, the people, the school, and the food news media, business, telling them that littering problems, and ask them to help to resolve it. And another point I think is probably recycling of styrofoam would be one of the solution to accomplish that, if the city willing to work on that. And right now, with the inflation and people talking about secession, I think it's not the right time to increase the cost of the food business over here in Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you. Hector Ramirez, followed by Sherry Boone. Sherry Boone, okay.
Good afternoon, I am Hector Ramirez, and we operate 85 restaurants in the city of Los Angeles. My opinion on banning styrofoam, I don't agree on that because there is not enough education for the community to recycle. Instead of changing styrofoam containers to another type of containers, we should work on a program to educate the community and develop recyclative facilities to reduce the waste going into the landfills. I did work with the city of Santa Monica, changing the styrofoam containers to another type of containers. Our unit in Santa Monica increased the cost by 300% on the food containers. This is not economic for the community, for the businesses, and for everybody in the city. The city of Santa Monica reported that they work very efficient during the conversion. But on the other hand, they forgot about the businesses, the additional cost that they were forced to go, carry over on those changes. So my opinion should be educate the community, educate the public, and, you know, do recycling the city and the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Sherry Boone, followed by Rick Brewer.
Good afternoon, I'm with American Chemistry Council and specifically the Plastic Food Service Packaging Group, the makers of polystyrene food packaging and other sort of products. PFG members recognize that litter is a growing issue for local communities. It's unfortunate that people are careless and often negligent in where and how they dispose of products after their useful life, and we know our products are included as part of that litter. We applaud the city of Los Angeles and the Los Angeles Bureau of Sanitation for your groundbreaking curbside recycling program, which now is accepting all plastics, 1 through 7, including bags and polystyrene. As a matter of fact, in just a few months since you've been accepting polystyrene, since that program has been implemented, we've seen that the city has already recycled 50,000 pounds of polystyrene. Goes up to a company in Stockton by the name of Tim Braun. It makes this type of product, which is a green building product. We understand that it's a priority for the city, and we appreciate your efforts in recycling polystyrene. But because we recognize that there's no truly, there truly is no environmentally preferable form of litter, we have engaged in several activities that you may or may not know about to help combat the root problem, which is litter. We are supporter of Keep LA Beautiful. We also are going to continue this program that you've already started, the educational campaign. We want to continue that. We have a new partnership that you may not be familiar with, with the California State Parks, with Keep California Beautiful and the American Chemistry Council. We're increasing the number of recycling bins that are on beaches, including beaches in LA County. We supported last session AB 258, which was a resin pellet containment bill that was based on the plastics industry's best management practice program that they developed to contain those products, called Operation Clean Sweep. We partnered with the Aquarium of the Pacific to install a permanent marine debris educational interactive display aimed at teaching young people about the watershed and the importance of recycling and proper disposal of plastics. We're a longtime supporter of Keep America Beautiful, and helped sponsor yesterday's national kickoff of the Great American Cleanup held in Sacramento. We've also, on a more local level, supported several small local nonprofits at combating all forms of litter. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Rick Brewer, followed by Aaron Green.
Good afternoon, council. My name is Rick Brewer. I represent the United Food Commercial Worker Union. We represent the plastic industry, several hundred people in there. We also represent the retail grocery workers, probably 100,000 strong in Southern California. We feel that this is not the solution, this ban. We feel that what it would affect would be work, good paying jobs, good benefits, good retirement for these folks. We're very aware of environmental problems that we have, but we feel that a lot of the speakers that spoke today regarding the trash and the pollution that way, we feel that, I think that is the target that we need to be looking at. It's not a ban of this. It will definitely affect workers, and we appreciate your consideration and looking at this in depth instead of just at the surface. We appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Aaron Green.
Good afternoon, my name is Aaron Green. I'm here representing VICA, the Valley Industry and Commerce Association. And I appreciate the time that these joint committees are taking to address this issue. I'm here to talk about polystyrene. And I just want to start by saying that VICA primarily supports improving the status of the environment, and we have supported in the past recycling initiatives. VICA was the first business group to support Renew LA, an initiative that was focused on encouraging recycling in LA. We believe that primarily litter is an issue of consumer behavior, and that in order for this to be addressed, consumer behavior has to be changed. As you heard, polystyrene has been increasingly recycled, it's been making it into blue bins, and we think that this is a positive sign of improvement. We don't think that banning polystyrene is the answer, that it's going to increase the cost to businesses, it's going to increase cost to the city, and that it's just really going to substitute one form of litter for the other. It's going to add an additional and unintended cost to businesses, as we heard about. It's going to substitute a more expensive form of what we, of cups and other forms of, you know, service trays. And we don't really know what the benefit is going to be. As you heard, it doesn't look like there's necessarily going to be a positive environmental impact by getting rid of polystyrene. Additionally, you know, we, it looks like banning polystyrene is not going to help the city. VICA is looking forward to a possibility to collaborate with polystyrene producers, business groups, the LAUSD and other community groups. I really appreciate your time today, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Carlos Lozano, followed by Noé Álvarez. Carlos Lozano, is Carlos here? Okay. Mr. Álvarez, are you here? Noé? Alice Meyer? And Cristian Macias?
That's me, Alice Meyer is my name, and I represent a few of the restaurants, small restaurants. And one thing I have to say, the best thing, one of the best things that we have at the restaurant is the low cost of the to-go containers. If you, if we replace this, this will be costing so much, and we'll pass the cost to other customers. And the customers won't like it, and will push us to close the business. I think education, way back to little kids, for littering will be good. More cleanups, and also more containers, trash containers around will solve the problems. Let's go ticket all the litters, litter, the litters, or whatever you call it, like the jail walking. And we see less jail walking now because of the tickets that we give them. So littering will be, less enforce the littering instead of banning. Banning is not the answer. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Alice Meyer?
Oh, that's me.
Oh, you're, you're Alice, okay, sorry. Okay, then Christina Macias.
Hi, my name is Christina Macias. Thank you for your time. I represent a very small family business on 30th and Figueroa, and we heard about a possible ban in the future of polystyrene. We got really scared. As you know, all costs are rising, electricity, all of our staples, our food, gasoline. We have about 65% drive-through business, which go out into go containers, and about 15% that are walk-up into go containers. We just recently became aware of the recycling of styrofoam. I would be more than happy to advertise that at our own cost. At 80% of our consumers that are taking away, they are able to recycle the polystyrene at their homes, since we do have the recycling now in LA, and we have mostly local customers. And so I would just really like to say that we're not in favor of recycle, of, I'm sorry, banning. We are 100% in favor of recycling. I personally, since I started working for the family business, have put our own trash bins, or any plastic aluminum that can't go out, I take personally to recycle. And if we can get blue bins in for businesses in the LA area, which I know a large amount are small, I think that would be something that would be more environmentally friendly, would keep the cost low for businesses, it would not hurt us economically. And I would just like to thank you for your time and letting me share my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you very, very much. I have no more speaker cards. I appreciate the comments from the public, and that will close the public portion of our meeting. I'll look to my colleagues if any of them have comments, and start with Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I want to thank the staff again, but I'd like to invite them to the tables because I don't want to make this torturous. I really want to see how we can build up this partnership and work together on meeting our goals. And I want to thank the new leadership of the department as well, and your goodwill in moving forward and seeing how we can respond to these issues. But in item number one, we did that one motion, that motion was written back in '06 when we asked the CIO, as well as Bureau of Sanitation, to come back. And I know, Mr. Oliver, you weren't at the leadership role at that time, so I appreciate the report you're doing today. But there is a concern I have, and I believe there's a reference to creating a sunset clause in terms of working with polystyrene. And, you know, we look at the direction I believe this council's setting and trying to establish, a vision for a different Los Angeles, a different way in which we impact our environment and improve our quality of life. Why would we want to create a sunset clause? And one of your reports, I'm since item one or two, why would we want to create a sunset clause to consider bringing back polystyrene? If our goal is to...
Get rid of it.
Get rid of it. I mean, I'm, it's a little confusing to me. Why would you, why would you even consider that?
Councilmember Reyes, in making our recommendation with that kind of timeline and a sunsetting provision was, in the context of this being a long pilot program. Now, that was at the time we made the recommendation. It was to be used as a experimental field, one in which we have a heck of a lot more control over implementing, certainly in city facilities, and monitoring. So we felt that in those five years, if no other decision was made in between, that in those five years, either it was to be made permanent, extended, or allowed to sunset. Now, we expect all along that in between, a final and ultimate decision is going to be made, not just in city facilities, not just for city facilities, but for the city as a whole. So the five year could become non-consequential. I mean, in that same regard, we can make the inverse, meaning leave it, leave it permanent and changed if, if anything else.
Okay. I appreciate that, because that does a little confusing to me, so I appreciate that clarity. The, the fact that we've had this plastic bag task force for two years, and the CIO report, or the report in general, didn't even refer to all the work we were doing beforehand, and that just kind of struck me as odd, is that if all that work we were working on and all the motions beforehand that were supported by the whole council, it's, it's like it didn't happen, and I just found that curious that we wouldn't even refer to that. The other point I wanted to make is, on polystyrene, when it does have food in the container, when it's recycled, if it's contaminated, we can't recycle it, correct?
If it has food in it, no. Meaning it still has any visible, but if it's just a residue along the walls and on the bottom, yes.
So in effect, it's, it's non-recyclable if it's contaminated. So I just want to make that clear, because we heard in the presentations that polystyrene is recyclable, when in fact it's not, if it does have food. So I want to just make that for the record. So we do want to be as supportive as possible in terms of dealing with the business side of this issue, but also... side of this issue, but I also think we should be making decisions based on facts. That being said, aren't we in a position to look at how we can support the small business person, the medium-sized business in, in, in the process of transitioning? In other words, if we're going to be asking them to no longer use certain materials, aren't we in a position to help with the transition process? You're already starting in with the education side of it. We're letting them know where they can recycle. We're being supportive with these kinds of programs. But it would seem to me this city with all its prowess could evolve to a point where we could start looking at working with the Palm Water Power, working with our small business development entities and C D D, that we can actually start looking at this notion of transitioning to other types of products and actually help the small businesses become more green friendly. Now, do you think we could take it to that level?
I, I think that it'll be, it would be our duty, council member, to help with that transition if, if, if the council and the mayor were to then adopt that policy. It would be our duty as a department to make, to implement your policy and that would include us finding ways to transition businesses and customers and residents into complying with the new policy. Yes, I mean.
And one last point, in terms of getting the word out, the ban on polystyrene is only for city facilities. I've been getting hundreds of letters on the impact on small businesses as if we're going to do this citywide. And so we have to figure out a better way to get the message out there.
But it's not for citywide.
It's not citywide at this point.
Okay.
That is just city facilities because we have such a big city operation and we don't want to choke on this move. We wanted to take it in small bites. And so what we're going through today, we're going to learn from it. So that's something I would like to request of you, if we can make that happen and, and get the message out that we are not banning polystyrene citywide, it's just for city operations. And I'll stop here. I do have a directive, but I'll stop here.
Mr. Smith?
We're going to be asking back for a report back. I'm just wondering for the interest of time, if I could just, I'll, I'll present my questions to you in writing because they're numerous for the report back. I think I'll just say some time, but one last thing I want you to ask, recommendation, Bureau of Sanitation review A B nine oh-four, which the city had supported last year, has been significantly changed in light of the amendments to the bill, if the city still wants to support that bill, if you could get back just on that separately from this, I'd appreciate that. But I, you know, Mr. Reyes brought the point that we've done a good job of saying we recycle polystyrene, but in fact, a good portion of that stuff going in there is not recycled and it's going right to the landfills anyways, contaminating our loads. And I think we've done a disservice maybe to the people of L.A. saying we want to take your polystyrene, but the stuff that's coming out of the clamshells from the McDonald's or the Carl's Jr. or the local store is contaminated. We can't ever touch that. We really are focusing, I think, on the packaging materials where more bang for the buck comes anyway. It's clean, it's bigger, it's more volume, et cetera. And that's where our real, our efforts ought to be placed. And I think maybe we should refine our message a little bit that, you know, it's not just styrofoam, it's clean styrofoam. And because I see too much contamination, as I've looked at some of our centers, it's upwards of thirty percent contamination. That's a bad number. And so I think we need to refine that. And on these others, I'll give you a written document for the clerk and both for the, to report back on these items in the interest of time.
Okay, and then we'll go back to Mr. Reyes for further instruction. And Mr. Smith, I think you did say on the record, and I want to just clarify, I think you wanted the C L A to prepare a resolution in support of A B twenty-eight, twenty-nine from Assemblyman Mike Davis. Do you, we want the C L A to do that?
Yes.
All right, so that'll be one of the instructions. And then Mr. Reyes will go to you.
Yeah, just in terms of a sequence of events and timeframes, we're looking at perhaps the middle of April or the end of April for a joint committee to get the follow-up on these questions that we're putting forward.
And the working draft.
And the working draft. And then we'll be able to separate the polystyrene issue from the plastic bag and everything else that we're, we're dealing with, correct?
Yes.
And then the draft will give us a clue as to the direction you're going in and other factors we should consider and maybe give us some foreshadowing of, of costs in terms of implementation and we can get that from the C A O.
Yes.
Okay.
And again, it's a working draft, so we understand that.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, and then so in addition to that, I want the report to, if you have the, some basic information gathered, not just related to phase out, but products that can serve as alternatives and their effectiveness, input that you've gotten to date, and I'll give you a copy of this, from plastic and polystyrene industries on alternatives, potential programs that could increase the recycling rate of polystyrene and the actual environmental benefit that could result from a phase out. And I'll give you these notes in just a second. Mr. Smith?
I did just want to get one item on the verbal record, and that is, in my meeting with E P S Industry, they've said they were willing to offer to pay for a lifecycle analysis of their product. And so I want to ask that our C L A get together with them to establish how that would be done, set up the proper account and set up a system that we can do, perform a credible organization, look at the, to look at lifecycle analysis and, and report back separately on that, separate of this report.
Okay, so.
Just one last comment. I just wanted to share with you that when it started down this road, it started with the river revitalization. And those first initial hearings way back in oh-one, oh-two, what became very evident was all the trash and debris in the river. And from there, it just started progressing into this bigger picture. And so I want to thank my colleagues for, for working with me on this and in terms of just, because it's citywide, it's a citywide issue. And so getting to sources, getting to shift our culture so that it's not the end of the pipeline mentality, but it's actually getting to source reduction, I think is critical. So again, under the new leadership of the department, I want to thank you for that and hopefully can keep making progress. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll see you in about thirty days and I'll give you, oh, 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 didn't see you there, Mr. Labonge. You were too quiet.
Right there, missed me there. I just want to ask a question.
I almost missed you.
Say all this goes, comes back with a position that it, you would think the council would enact it. What timetable would we enact it? What, what from the consumer, from the business person? Do we have an idea?
The report, the report initially said five years. Santa Monica's done it in a year. I think we want to look at something less than five personally, but that's what.
How many square miles is Santa Monica? Santa Monica more than?
One year.
Fifteen square miles? How big is Santa Monica? Eight point three square miles.
Smaller than your district.
Yeah, right. And yours too.
That's part of why we, thank you for giving us more time. You want to know more on the enforceability side of things, which I would believe much of it would fall on sanitation. So we want to be able to tell you and, and give you more answers to those questions. And why would we think it's an enforceability period?
Kids love this.
A transition period.
Right, and also I think also members, the big people, I don't want to say the big people. Restrike that from the record.
I'll strike it from the record.
Those have multiple franchises, could spread their cost over a wide plane. Those who are very hardworking mom and pop have a very narrow opportunity to try to do this here. And I would want to see some factor in that. I wouldn't want to penalize, because much of the small business throughout Los Angeles is individual entrepreneur who has to really try to put it together, you know, before they could do it. I still believe, members, that the only way we're going to do it if we get tough on street cleaning and tough on littering. And, and we go back to where you see in those old movies where people, shopkeepers go out and sweep the gutter. I don't know for you, what do you think this would cost there, Mr. Director?
For the businesses to do it?
Yeah, what is this whole implementation, just a guess, and you and everything else?
I mean, my wild guess is that I think there's goodwill. You heard some of the speakers.
I know, I got it, but that's just what it would cost. I just want to, give me a number, any number. Seven point five million?
Staff of ten, I don't know, one and a half, two billion, uh, two million?
Two million, two million. I think for a hundred thousand dollars, we could buy brooms. And I say this all to just really get people to take back the streets and keep it clean. I just wanted to lay that out to us because I know we're very sophisticated in trying to do this. If, if people don't put it there, we don't have to pick it up. And we got to encourage people not to litter and make sure, as we have done, and Ed mentioned it cleanly, the source reduction of, of trying to change material, the timeframe is very important. But I just wanted to stand for litter abatement, which is so important. Thank you.
Without any further objection or comment, we will put those instructions on the record. I'll give you the notes and we'll see you back in about thirty days. Thank you very much. This is the time for public comment for items that are not on the agenda. We have two public comment cards, one from Shelley Backlar and Arnold Sachs. If you would both come up to the mic.
Good afternoon. I just wanted to thank the Bureau of Sanitation for being such a strong supporter of Friends of Los Angeles River and being a partner along with the, the city council members, the Plastics Task Force, even our industry members that are here. But I also wanted to offer our services in terms of each year we hold the largest urban river cleanup in the country. That's coming up on May seventeenth. And it's a wonderful opportunity to, as Councilmember Gruel said, to teach about personal responsibility and best management practices that are very easy to do. And we work on giving recycled bottles and reusable bottles and reusable bags. And we would love to work with you on the messages that we can put forward on our website, during the event itself and any kind of promotion to help with these projects that you're working on right now. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Arnold Sachs.
Good afternoon and thank you again. As I reiterated earlier in today's council chambers meeting, now chance to discuss with the ad hoc river committee, any possibility of investigating a change in the Quimby funds and using some of them to allocate some of that money that's not being spent to use for the river improvement that would generally show some absolute work being done and agreement that would benefit all the public and not the people that are going to be occupying the high rises that are generating the Quimby funds. And if or another alternative for the Quimby funds would be to use that money for mass transit projects that would be necessitated because of the increase in people living downtown. Thank you for your attention. Thank you for your time and thank you for your answers.
Thank you. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.